Good evening. I'm Doreen Binder, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Portland, and I'm here along with Holly Schmidt of the Interfaith Alliance on Poverty. And we would both like to welcome you to our candidate forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that works to help citizens make informed choices in elections. We do not endorse candidates or political parties, but rather we give voters the information they need to select a candidate. Membership information is available on our website and at the table at the back of the room, as is information on our cosponsor, the Interfaith Alliance on Poverty. These forums are brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Portland through their education fund and through generous support from Metro East Community Media, Multnomah Bar Foundation, Paloma Clothing, Sarah Fruing Fund, and the Weiss Foundation. And in addition, we would like to thank Multnomah County for the use of this room. If you have not yet registered to vote, the last day to do so will be April 24th. You can contact the county elections office or register online through the Secretary of State. Ballots will be mailed out beginning on April 27th. And now I have the honor of introducing Holly Schmidt from the Interfaith Alliance on Poverty.
Thank you. I am Holly Schmidt, a member of the Interfaith Alliance on Poverty. We are thirteen faith-based congregations in Portland, working together to address the root causes and systems that perpetuate the problem of homelessness and poverty. Change almost always begins with having effective, committed, political leadership. And to that end, we have joined with the League of Women Voters to sponsor the candidate forum tonight and the one in two weeks on April 24th. Thank you.
Welcome. This is our fourth section tonight, and it is the county commissioners for District Two. We're going to last approximately 15 minutes. As always, please forward, and we already have one. Any of your questions that we can incorporate tonight as you meet these candidates. I'm your moderator, Linda Mather, and we have our four candidates here for District Two. I will certainly, I will surely, certainly, shortly, call on them to start their opening questions. It's been a long night. As I've told them, and as I think you know, we will keep rotating through the four of them, so they each have a chance to answer a question first. They will have a minute to respond, and of course, we're going to ask them to solve the problems of the world in that one minute, but we're going to try, at any rate. The timekeepers are up forward. They're going to give a 15-second warning, and then a stop, and let us start. So, Mr. Broussard, would you start with your opening, please?
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Bruce Broussard, and I see some familiar faces, and I really feel that the issue with reference to the county, Multnomah County here, in our city, in our state, is a very, very important one. District Two is very, very important, because it's kind of like the focal point where a lot of the federal funds were going to. And now they're trying to figure out, what do we do? Some of those areas are being dismantled as far as funds are concerned. We've got a lot of competitiveness, if you will, for those funds. And we've got many issues in Multnomah County, especially District Number Two. It is the poorest district, if you will, when you think about the county aspect of it. When you think about the poor, you think about all the issues that we see on TV, trying to figure out, how do we solve these problems? And in fact, the county, they're in the process right now, they have been hiring a lot of the people that they have been servicing to. And that's just a whole, that brings in a whole different world, various cultures and the like and whatever. So I'm really excited about doing this. I happen to be a senior citizen myself. I'm a Vietnam veteran, a disabled vet, Marine Corps type, and in all due respect, I'm really looking forward to running a good race. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jaya Pal, I want to make it Jaya Poor, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for staying this late. We really appreciate your willingness to hang in there and hear from us as well. I'm Sushila Jaya-Pal. I want to tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running for office. I'm an immigrant. I was born in India. I came to the U.S. when I was 16 to go to college. That was August of 1979, and I still remember that day. I still remember standing by the train tracks on the campus with my luggage strewn around me. I was wearing the clothes I'd brought for Pennsylvania winter, which meant a corduroy pants, a turtleneck, and a wool sweater. And it was late August. I have never felt so short, so brown, or so sweaty. I have lived here in Multnomah County, in District Two, for 24 years, all in District Two. I raised my children here. They graduated from Grant High School. I'm running for office because I feel a sense of urgency about what's happening here, and that is that too many people are struggling to find their place and keep their place in Multnomah County, to find housing, to keep jobs, to pay medical bills, to build a life for themselves and for their children. And disproportionately, those people are black and brown, immigrant and refugee. I feel urgency about changing that, and with your vote, I hope to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Maxwell?
Good evening, and hello neighbors and friends, and the Women League of Voters and the interfaith community. My name is Sharon Maxwell, and I'm native here to Multnomah County in the city of Portland. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, I'm a businesswoman. I've been operating my own general contracting firm for the last 16 years. When I noticed that District Two, which is the most diverse in Multnomah County, was destroyed and blighted, that people's lives were being desperately impacted, I went back to school so that I could help people get jobs who looked like me, people who were being marginalized, people who were being left behind. It's time for a true change in Multnomah County and in District Two. I am not the status quo. I am actually a trailblazer, a pioneer, someone who actually brings a track record of results. And to make sure that our students are graduating from high school, connecting their education to their career futures, it's no longer business as usual. The county can no longer operate in crisis mode. It's time for prevention.
Ms. Garcia?
Buenas noches, Maria Garcia. I'm running because I see that what we lack right now across our country is the connection between government and the people. We feel disconnected. We are doubtful of our representatives, of their integrity. I was born and raised in Mexico City. I know how this connection looks like. It's called corruption and dishonesty. I came to this country when I was 18 years old with my daughter. She was three years old at the time, looking for safety, looking for stability for my family. I know what it is to be undocumented. I know what it is, the feeling of uncertainty. I know what it is to work up to three jobs, and not being the parent that I wanted to be for my daughter. I know what it is to have legal representation that incorrectly translated what I wanted to say. So I'm here representing minority communities, which first language is not English. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our first question, Ms. Jaya Pal. It should be so easy, and I'm making a mess. Sorry. Bear with it. What will you do to move the dial to decrease poverty?
I think with all of the issues that we face in Multnomah County, we need to start with root causes. And in terms of poverty, the root causes include lack of access to family wage jobs. That's really what we're seeing in Multnomah County. It looks like full employment, because we've got this period of economic prosperity. But the reality is that we've got growing jobs and employment and wages at the higher end and at the very low end. So that means what looks like full employment is actually people cobbling together two and three jobs at the minimum wage level. And we know that that is not sufficient for folks to make a living here in Multnomah County. So what I will do is to work on creating family wage jobs. And there are a number of ways we can do that at the county, including making sure that when we've got county projects, we are connecting our local residents with those stable family wage jobs. And also work on investing in small businesses in our region. Small business for our economy is a real, is an engine of growth. And we can do more in terms of allowing people to access the capital and the resources they need to start and continue small businesses.
Ms. Maxwell?
So, day one, I've already been doing the work as a business owner, as a convener, as a community builder, been providing living wage jobs. I am a business major. I will convene with the roundtable, with our businesses at large. I'm already connected with various business associations. And just two days ago, I published an article on LinkedIn, and Tim Boyle has already responded to that. Today, there was a press conference in order to address this houseless and homeless issue. Businesses want to do something, but they need someone like me, who has the background to be able to address it at a roundtable. And how I see it is, we have to break the matrix. We have to make sure that adults, head of household families, have a quality of life. And they can only do that when the economics is there. They have to be getting a living wage so that they can model the example for their children. I wrote a book called The Investment Portfolio, and it is a working model that will help all people change their trajectory and be able to have upward mobility. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia?
Would you please repeat the question?
Sure. What will you do to move the dial to decrease poverty?
As a business owner, I know the importance of small business. We create jobs. Personally, I have a very diverse group of employees who are PSU students. So I see every day the needs of not just my customers, but my employees. And being a student, they need so much support, as well as the business needs, the good employees to always show up at work. I know that if my employees miss a day of work, they're missing, they're short at the end of their month, to pay their rents, to pay for books. And that reflects in my business, too. So I need to make sure that my employees have a fair salary. I need to make sure that this echoes into the county. We need incentives for small business, because they're the core of our system. So we need to bring prosperity to our county. And business is a really good way to bring prosperity.
Thank you. Mr. Broussard?
Okay. Again, I think in that particular area, I would like to focus, because again, I'm a senior citizen. But at the same time, when you start thinking at District Two, senior citizen is a priority. I mean, we're going to, the so-called baby boomers are going to be more. We're going to have more problems with that area. Many of those folks are going to be basically dependent upon government. So as far as I'm concerned, the first thing I want to do is I want to make sure we identify those seniors within our county. Who are they? Where are they living? Are they able to continue to pay for their homes, making sure that they can? If they are in there, maybe reduce their taxes, if you will, as far as property taxes are concerned. Make sure that the facilities for eating on wheels, on meals, and whatever, we can expand that situation. Get those seniors out of the house. Give them the opportunity, if you will, to live their life fully while they're still here. So again, I'm going to focus on the poverty among senior citizens. It's going to be a major problem, and I think I'm the guy that can do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maxwell, we'll start with you on this one. Describe leadership roles you have had, and how will these roles improve your work on the county commission?
Okay. So as a business owner, I've been operating and running my business for the last 16 years. As a member of OWMI, AGC, of other business associations, I've been on various boards and committees. I've actually been on the city of Portland's Coab, which is the community oversight for police reform for the settlement agreement. I've been on the county's CHIP board, which the county just approved, the adopted strategic plan. I was an advisory board member from the community at large there for the William Corridor Traffic and Safety. My leadership skills as a community builder, being able to convene with my nonprofits, to bring stakeholders together, to be able to do projects, to help our young people be connected. So I've been on various boards, and also for-profit and nonprofit.
Ms. Garcia?
I was the former president of Don Shu Portland, which is a community nonprofit organization, and we are focused on social justice. So through Don Shu Portland, we have fed over 6,000 homeless people and families every third Saturday of the month for 2016, I mean, sorry, 2017. I was, I am a former employee of the Mexican consulate, and I work in the community affairs department. And I promote the programs that the Mexican government had for Mexicans living abroad, and I connect it with indigenous communities. They are very segregated. So I support their cultural events. I encourage them to continue participating in promoting their culture, which is very important for us. I am a co-chair of the New Portlanders Policy Commission, and is representative for the Sanctuary City Task Force, which is really important and close to my heart. I am a board member of Boomarts, which is a cultural theater performance company. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Broussard?
Okay. As far as my experience in that particular arena, my wife and I started a low-income housing program, as far as homeownership, homeownership is concerned. We did quite well in that particular business at the time, because property was cheap, and we were able to get those folks in those homes. In addition to that, after a while, things started changing. So what we did was that we built a senior citizen complex. We built that, my wife and I, a 38-unit senior citizen complex, Walnut Park, right there in Killingsworth and Union, behind that same complex aspect of it. We could have done more, but again, like I said, the competition in that area is pretty heavy. We've since then, we basically bought the ownership of the Portland Observer newspaper, trying to get a better feel of what's going on in that community. Because that community, in all due respect, that newspaper was supposed to focus, in all due respect, on African-Americans, so that the majority of the community could understand what that was all about, and maybe solve some of those problems of the difference, difference, if you will, of race in our, in our community. So I've done a number of those things. Besides that, like I said, I had the, I've got the Oregon Voters Digest. You can check me out. I've been on TV, dealing with the issues for a long time. And at the same time, well, I'll get that, I'll get that the next time around. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Jaya?
Lot of stories.
Thank you. I have served in a number of leadership capacities, both in private business and in the nonprofit world. I'm an attorney. My last law job was running the legal department of Adidas America, which at the time was a billion-dollar company. I've served on the boards and worked in other capacities with a number of community organizations, including Planned Parenthood, the Portland Schools Foundation, Metropolitan Family Service, a range of organizations that work on issues connected to what the county works on, social services, education, access to health care. In each of those capacities, I have been responsible for identifying solutions and driving them through really large organizations and systems. So just a couple of examples. At Adidas, I was responsible for developing and implementing a plan to improve the conditions in our factories across Southeast Asia. At the Regional Arts and Culture Council, I led an 18-month effort to invest public funding in local organizations serving communities of color. Those skills of being able to identify solutions and move them through large organizations will be directly applicable to my work as a county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And audience, don't forget, you can send in some questions if you would like. So you can do some more questions. Okay. I know it's late. Okay. Ms. Garcia, you get the next one, which is an audience question. What should the county be doing for immigrants that it's not doing, or it hasn't done in the past?
Thank you. As I said before, I am one of the representatives for the Sanctuary City Task Force. And this is a very serious topic, and we should be very concerned about it, because we are having a shortage of migrant workers. And it's happening already in California. It's happening here in Oregon. So these migrant workers are not coming to Oregon in the same number that they used to come before. And actually, specifically Mexicans and Latinos, they're going back to their countries because of the fear of deportation. It's a serious problem, because it's going to affect our local economy, and the price of food, in general, is going to go up. So when we were passing the resolution for the Sanctuary City Task Force, the city put on the side $700,000 for a legal fund, to help people going through this process. But it's not enough money, and the county has to pitch in in that aspect.
Mr. Broussard?
I will point to the fact that on the 22nd of this month, which is on the Oregon Voters Digest on Comcast, I'm going to be doing a show where I'll be interviewing the petitioners of repealing the whole issue of sanctuary state. And I think there's going to be a very interesting interview. They were the same group that basically talked to and repeal the licensing situation. So I think one of the things we need to do, we need to give Argonians an opportunity to vet, if you will, their reasoning for this whole issue. It's a big, big, big issue. I mean, I could spend an hour talking to you about how it happened, but the bottom line right now is that we need to learn first. Argonians need to know, so they can make a, make a decision that's right for all of us.
Ms. Jaya Pal?
Thank you. Our immigrant communities are a source of such strength for all of us, and bring assets. I think we often tend to think about our immigrant communities as having deficits, and they do need help with some specific issues, but they bring enormous resources and assets. I think what we need, we need to be doing is to really looking at our immigrant community wellness. There's an immediate threat that's posed by this administration, and we absolutely need to protect all of our immigrant families from that threat. In addition, though, we need to build the health and resiliency of their entire communities. And that means figuring out what our immigrant communities need for their children to succeed at school, to get the health care that they need that's appropriate to their culture, to deal with mental health issues, and to create a sense of community for each community, and to, and to bring them into the broader community as well. So, you know, those are the things that I will focus on as county commissioner.
Ms. Maxwell?
So as commissioner, I will continue to do the work that I've already been doing as an oversight advisory board member for the county's CHIP. That was the federal compliance that was adopted last Thursday by the county, in that it speaks to the service delivery of our immigrants, and how the county services will address that going forward. We did some heavy lifting. The chair and the commissioners voted on it. They approved it. And in that plan, it speaks, each community was able to identify and speak to what they actually need. And we're going to see some great changes coming forward. Thank you.
Okay. We start again with Mr. Broussard. And this is one of those great 60-second ones.
No problem.
What are the county's most important programs? Why are they important? And what changes would you propose, if any?
The first one I'll do, we will not sell Wapato. There's no way in the world you can sell, sell a piece of property that's about $100 million for six or seven million bucks. We need, we need those, those beds. Think about it. We've got a sheriff, and we've got, the sheriff is a jailer. Right now, when it overcrowds, they let these folks go. They let them go, and they come right back. We need those extra beds. We need to maybe move some of those services, if you will, to Wapato. And so that's, that's a, that's a major, major priority area. And then the other thing is that we've got new auditors coming in. In fact, I'm going to be interviewing the auditors on the 29th. And you're going to see the new, fresh auditors, and that's, that's going to be another very interesting one. We need to know what, where the money's going. We're, we're losing a lot of money. Forty percent of the budget, $2 billion, $2 billion, forty percent of that budget is going to the Sheriff Department. Gee, that's a lot of fishing. Thank you.
Ms. Jaya Pal?
Thank you. I think one of the most important things about the county programs is that they are all, they reinforce each other, and they're all connected to each other. In other words, the work that we do around housing has an effect on our health system. The work we do in our health system has an effect on housing. So the first, my first response to that is I think we need to always be thinking about our programs holistically, and not as separate silos, and trying always to bring those programs and those departments together. You know, the most pressing issue facing the county right now, I believe, is housing and homelessness. And we have a number of programs that are intended to alleviate the suffering of homelessness, as well as to prevent homelessness. I think preventing homelessness by identifying people who are at risk of losing their housing and allowing them to stay in the housing that they already have is one of the most important things that the county can focus on going forward. Other incredibly important programs, the community health program, our clinics, our school-based clinics. I think, again, there, what we can do is pull them together and make sure that they're working together with our housing programs, that they're not in separate silos. And criminal justice, I would say, is the third largest chunk of the county's work, and so important. And I'm out of time, so I'm not going to say what I would do there.
Ms. Maxwell?
Do you mind repeating that for me, Linda?
Sure. What are the county's most important programs? Why are they important? What changes, if any, would you propose?
Great. Thank you. This is so important to me. So the three areas that I fill are the county's top three missions: mental health, public safety, and public health. All of those are, all three are interdependent and interconnected. First of all, we need to do an audit on each of those three areas. It's already been identified that in each area, there's enough money to actually do the work, but the money is being misdirected because the county's business model is under a crisis program. We need to change our business model so that it's actually who we are, models who we are, a public health agency, and that we're focusing on prevention. As, as it relates to the public safety, we know that the sheriff, the DA, and the judges, they receive 45% of all county dollars. That's $950 million. That is unacceptable, and they focus on intervention. That needs to be changed to prevention. And then the public health, there is enough dollars to make sure that we're addressing a quality of life for all of Multnomah County. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia?
There's several programs that are very important, and one of them I would like to mention is the Summer Works Program. I was part of this program last summer, so I don't know if you're very familiar with it, but we have young adults working in different business, and they're paid by the county, or different nonprofit organizations that work with the county. And this is a very valuable program, because these young adults get to experience what it is to work in different settings, and it helps them to develop their sense of what is it that they want in the future. Having that encounter is very important. And I would like to extend it to not just the summertime, but all year long. Also, health clinics. We have several, all over different schools. We don't have enough. We need more health clinics in, in the schools. We also have the SAN system, which is a great program, but we need people to know that this program exists. I didn't know about this program when my kids were attending this school.
Okay. Thank you. Starting us off, Ms. Jaya Pal, give a specific example of a case when you compromised, and a specific example when you did not compromise.
I mentioned earlier, having served on the Board of the Regional Arts and Culture Council. When I got on that board, and one of the reasons I was interested in it is because I really view the arts as a tool for social change and for building community, community alliances and social justice. When I got on the board, I discovered that 80% of the funding that, that RAC receives were going to the five largest arts organizations in town. These are wonderful organizations. I attend their, their programs, and, and I think they're wonderful. However, those five largest organizations don't serve 80% of the people in Multnomah County. And my objective and the 18-month restructuring I led was to restructure our grant-making, so that we were investing truly in all people in Multnomah County. The place where I had to compromise, we were able to shift funding. The place where I compromised was on the amount of funding that we shifted. We didn't shift quite as much as I would have liked to. The place I didn't compromise was on the core value, that our mission was to serve all people in Multnomah County, and we needed to make the philosophical, philosophical shift, that that was how we were going to approach our grant-making.
Ms. Maxwell?
As a servant leader, as a transformative leader, as a leader who takes action, in my compromising, to be able to hire over 200 people from this local community, and pay myself a living wage at the same time, not getting rich, making profits, putting profits over the lives of people, to make sure that my mission and my passion was to make sure that people from District Two, people, minorities that have been marginalized, who, companies that would not allow them to work in the construction industry, my company made efforts to make sure that we were hiring both men and women from the community, making sure that the dollars that my company was winning contracts from Multnomah County, from the city of Portland, to make sure that people were not being left behind. So in compromise, yes, as an owner, I made sure that people had a living wage, and paid myself the same, so that making sure those dollars were being truly invested. myself the same so that making sure those dollars were being truly invested.
Ms. Garcia?
As a business owner, I have opened the doors of my business for different activist groups, different organizations also that really don't have a place where to gather and talk about social issues. Every second Saturday of the month for 2017, I open the doors for a community to come and talk about social issues. I donated a percentage of the sales to a specific group. I compromised my business, yes, because I didn't know what was the reaction of my landlord, of my neighbors, to have specific groups coming together and just talk about what was happening around us. And it's important. It is important that we open our doors for community to talk to each other, to get to know each other. So it is a high risk as a business owner. For me, it was because, as you can tell, I'm an immigrant woman, and I don't know what the reaction of others can be towards my business or myself, but the response has been beautiful, and I'm very grateful for that.
Mr. Broussard?
Well, my compromising came when my wife and I decided to build a low-income senior citizen housing project. I'd been running for office, in fact, for state representative at the time, and I'd met some seniors, and Mrs. Maurice Smith at the time, and they were saying that gee whiz, they were in need of low-income housing for seniors. And I said to them, yes, I will put that together for you. I would make every attempt that I could. Well, I didn't win office, but I did it. And in all due respect, it took us two years. We fought Neil Goldsmith. Neil Goldsmith wanted to put a tennis court on the property, but the fact of the matter is, we ended up, we wanted to act, and in fact, we were going to build 152 units, but we ended up building one-third of it, or one-fourth of it, of the aspect of it. So I did not compromise. It took us two years, but we got it done, and I really feel good about that and very proud of that.
Okay, thank you. New question, and Ms. Maxwell, you'll start us off. Government can move slowly with constraints of rules, laws, unions. How will you help guide change in this kind of environment?
So I'm already doing that as a business owner, as a nonprofit founder, as a community builder, and a liaison within the community. I know that it takes, things take time because in birthing a company, in birthing two nonprofits, all of those took time. But you know what? If you have a plan and you work that plan, that plan can come to pass. And I believe that as a part of the county's mission and the vision and the strategic guidelines that have been adopted, we just keep moving those forward and making sure that they're being implemented and executed internally as well as externally, and we're holding ourselves accountable. That is what the public wants, is transparency, accountability, and they want to make sure that they're getting a return on their dollars.
Ms. Garcia?
Would you please repeat that question?
Sure, I would when I find where I, here I put it. Government can move slowly with constraints of rules, laws, and unions. How will you help guide change in this environment?
Thank you. I have worked for the Mexican government, so I know exactly what that looks like, is bureaucracy. And I know that many times it takes a long time because they don't want to work because they don't want to listen to the people. So it requires somebody that has those beyond courageous conversations, but we have to be brave, we have to be courageous as leader to make them work. And I'm not just talking about the Mexican government, but all governments. We need to be connected with reality. We need to push. We need, sometimes we need to demand that certain work has to be done and cannot wait. In this case, we're talking about Multnomah County Services. Those services cannot wait. People cannot wait. So we have to make sure that we are courageous enough and brave enough to face these people who are stopping these actions from moving forward. That was my end. Thank you.
Mr. Broussard?
Okay, in my particular situation, I've been doing Oregon Voters Digest, my talk show, for about the last 25 years, and I've been basically interviewing issues, and those are very important, basically educating and informing people. We need to know what these issues are. It's like the county. We've got a $2 billion budget, and we've got all sorts of agencies, we've got agency heads, and there's no way one person can handle and deal with all of those individuals. So the bottom line is, my thing is that if I'm appointed, I will be, I will continue that, educating and informing. We have to educate the public because in most cases, they have to pay the bill. They have to pay the bill. Some things can be done right, and some things can be done wrong, but the bottom line, you got to educate. We got to inform and educate. Some things we just got to let go. So that's exactly what I bring, if you will, when I sit on this commission. I will be communicating. I'll be communicating to everybody across the line, like I said, about the sanctuary city aspect of it, whatever, whether it be the auditors, whether it be the Sheriff's Department or whatever. We need to know. And from what I've seen, taking that three minutes beforehand, I've not seen people, if you will, being able to educate coming from this county, from the seat where we're sitting at right now. So thank you very much. I'll get to it.
Ms. Jaya Bell?
I think we have to come into work every single day with a clear understanding of what our core values are and what we want to achieve. And whatever change we want to make always has to be done in a thoughtful way, because if we don't do it thoughtfully, it's sometimes worse than if we do nothing at all. However, we always have to balance that thoughtfulness, you know, with, often the regulation and the bureaucracy that slows us down, that gums up the works, has to do with regulations that actually don't create more thoughtfulness, don't lead us to a better solution. So as we're developing solutions and pushing them through and trying to create change, we need to be looking at what are the obstacles along the way? Are they necessary towards thoughtfulness, towards good planning? Or are they not? Are they a relic of, say, 30 years ago that no longer have effect? So it's that sort of determined, every day, we are going to move this forward approach that I think it takes to create change in large bureaucracies.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, you'll start us on this one. How well is the county prepared to handle a major earthquake? What do you recommend to make the county's infrastructure and population more resilient?
I don't think the county is ready for a disaster of the nature. If we are not ready for a snowstorm, I don't think we're ready for an earthquake. So that's pretty obvious, and that affects our business, our neighborhoods. What can be done? That's a really good question. We have to partner up, I guess, with people that really are taking the lead in this aspect. I remember many years ago, I went to a training with the Red Cross, and actually, it was very interesting how that preparedness, awareness in regards of natural disasters. But I just saw it there at the Red Cross. I haven't seen any campaigns on how to train our communities in case of disaster. So it is really challenging. We need to change that because it can happen at any time, so I don't think we are ready for it.
Mr. Broussard?
Again, I'd say also, too, we're not ready for it. It's something, in all due respect, naturally, if you're in a position that you can provide, get provisions, if you will, you probably stock those up, but in all due respect, you may be sleeping one day and get up tomorrow morning, and all of a sudden, there's this quake. So what do we do then? In all due respect, if we've got a good, if we've got good relationships with neighbors and this, that, and the other, it's going to take us all working together to go through this thing. It's not going to be, it's not going to be easy, it's not going to be nice, it's going to be this, that, and the other. We're going to have to work together. That's why we have to really get together and come under that flag, that US flag, and that we're all in this together.
Ms. Jaya Bell?
There are two pieces of this to me. One is infrastructure, and the other is human infrastructure, if you will. In terms of the physical infrastructure, I will confess that I'm not sure how ready we are. I don't know what the specific pieces of infrastructure planning are that are in place. We need to finance infrastructure, specifically bridges. That is one of the weakest points in an earthquake. On the people infrastructure, I think what we've done an okay job at, and this isn't just the county because it's the city as well, it's the Red Cross, it's all of the organizations that are working on this, we've done an okay job of letting people know that they need to have an emergency kit in their home. But being prepared for an earthquake involves a lot more than having that emergency kit in your basement. What I think we haven't adequately communicated is the scope of what will happen if there is an earthquake, and that is the length of time you have to be prepared for, the complete disappearance of the systems that we rely on. I think that it's going to take a lot more very intentional, determined, repeated communication to get people to understand those things.
Ms. Maxwell?
As a contractor and as an oversight board committee person for the county's emergency response over the last 10 years, and as a contractor, being on the emergency list, no, we're not prepared, but who is ever really, truly ready for an emergency? What we are working on is to make sure that we educate the public to the magnitude, and we need to do it regional as well as district-wide. We need to make sure that we're addressing the most vulnerable because those will be the people who will be the most desperately impacted because they lack the resources that when there is some type of devastation, they will not be able to move. We have already identified that we will lose water. It could be three to three, three days to three weeks that we would be without electricity and water. So we have to have a regional and a district plan.
Thank you. And Mr. Broussard will start again, and each of you stated you live in the community. What are some of the humanitarian duties you have done within District 2?
Well, in all due respect, I maintained I've kept the job. I've opened businesses, and in fact, to date, you notice I'm in sort of my uniform. My wife and I put together a volunteer kind of a thing, going out and reaching out to veterans. My job is to get out and reach out to veterans and tell them about their benefits, pick them up and take them down to the VA and interview with them. Because many of the veterans, we, in fact, we even go out to homes, if you will, and try to identify vets at those facilities, and in fact, bring the uniform there and raise the flag and cite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, and it's really a joy to see their faces and whatever. Many of those vets are not getting their benefits, and that's what I'm doing. I'm spending my time doing that, and in fact, the county is supposed to be doing that. Unfortunately, we have an outreach program, but that, again, too, is going to be one of my priorities, to make sure that we are, in fact, reaching out here at the county because that's a very, very important piece, especially those young fellows, too, and prime military and all. Thank you.
Ms. Jaya Bell?
A lot of my work in the community has been focused on education, and that's both the board work that I've talked about before and direct service work that I've done. I mentioned that my kids went to Grant High School. I served on the psych committee at Grant High School. I was an ASPIRE mentor, which is mentoring students who are, who will be first-time college students and guiding them through the college application process, which can be a really, really daunting process. I've also served as a CASA, as a court-appointed special advocate, working to be an advocate for children who've been taken out of the home for either abuse or neglect reasons. And a CASA is somebody who walks by that child and advocates for the child in the courtroom purely from what the best interests of that child are. Those are the two, those are two of the sort of most meaningful to me work that I've done.
Ms. Maxwell?
So my background is really extensive as a community builder. 1145, which is the faith-based group that worked to curb the violence within District 2, POIC, Chi Family Advocacy, Good in the Hood Parade Chair and Secretary, PTA, LSAC, also the youth program that I founded to help young people connect their education to their career futures. I was the small business person for President Obama to speak for his campaign. I worked for President Obama as well for the gun violence to get legislation passed as well as moving forward to prevent further gang violence within District 2, and also for 35 years, serving in my faith-based community with families and children, making sure that our families are intact.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes, as I said before, through the organization, I was the former, I was the president of, we fed over 6,000 homeless and families, and we still do that. I also advocate for rung-falling incarcerated Latino men. I constantly go to state jails and help them to get civil rights lawyers, and we have a direct line of communication with the Department of Corrections advocating for these incarcerated men who are also being victims of white supremacists inside jail. I also support the mothers of young men who have been killed by police brutality. So it's a constant work. As a community advocate, we never stop. It's constantly something. Every day, I advocate for Latino students who are being profiled, Latino students that are very close to be part of gangs because their parents are not home. So it's a constant work.
Thank you. And thank you for all the answers to your questions. Let's turn now to your concluding statement, and Ms. Maxwell, you'll start us off, please.
The people have spoken. The employees have spoken. Our communities of color have spoken. Action is needed now. We need a transformative leader. We need a servant leader. That's Maxwell, Sharon Maxwell. I'm asking for your vote, May 15th. Tell 10 friends and family Maxwell, Sharon Maxwell. I bring a track record and results, day one. I've already been doing it. It's not a heavy lift. As a pioneer woman in a non-traditional trade, as a woman who is a trailblazer, I've already done the heavy lifting. I'll just continue to further and do this work, making sure that I bring that tenacity, that perseverance, and that advocacy to county commission to make sure District 2 is a strong district and that our families are not further priced out and left behind. It's time now to make sure no one, no one is living in a tent. Thank you very much.
Ms. Garcia?
Thank you. I was asked to run for this position by community members because they know that I'm committed, and also because we need to have leaders that really understand the issues that every day we are facing. We are talking about deportations, we are talking about separation of families, we are talking about people incarcerated. We need leaders that really understand how these problems are affecting the development of our communities, our youth. I am there, I'm an advocate. I truly believe that we can make a change. And being an immigrant gives me a different perspective that is positive because we have a very diverse district. Our immigrant communities are being affected in a tremendous way, so we need to address these issues. We know that if we empower the people on the bottom, or the bottom of the society, then the effect is going to echo everywhere else. So I ask you for your support, Maria Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Broussard?
Again, I ask you for your support. I'm Bruce Broussard. I've got an extensive background. Yes, I've ran five different times, but I've learned quite a bit, and I've spent quite a bit of time talking about issues. I feel very comfortable in that. I feel, I understand what the county is all about. I understand what that issue is all about. I understand you got to communicate with a number of people if we're going to resolve anything. I can't promise you everything, but I'll work very hard to make sure that we solve some of the problems we have, like the Wapato thing. We have to solve that. Use the money that we can put back in the coffers, the crime issue aspect of it, the sanctuary city aspect of it. These are subject matters that a lot of times people don't want to talk to. Well, in all due respect, I will talk to those issues because if we don't talk to those issues, we won't get back and solving some of the problems we really, really have and we need to solve so we can get together. Because right now, we are divided, if you will. I'm not interested in the nationalist situation right now. I'm interested in the Oregon situation, more specifically, Multnomah County District Number 2, a very, very tough situation, and I can do the job. Thank you.
Ms. Jaya Bell?
Thank you. I mentioned in the opening statement that I'm running because I feel a sense of urgency about what's happening in the county, about the folks who are struggling, who are being pushed out, who can't find and keep their place here. I'm also running because I believe we can change that. I don't think it's inevitable. We got where we are through policy choices and decisions, and we can change it the same way. Making those changes takes understanding how to find solutions and to push them through large organizations, and I have a track record of doing that. It also is going to require working with broad sectors of the community, across sector, with business, with nonprofits, with government, with community members, to find solutions to create coalitions and to push them forward. I am really proud to say that my campaign is supported by a broad swath of Multnomah County and District 2. I have been endorsed by former Governor Barbara Roberts, by Representative Earl Blumenauer, by all of the unions that have endorsed in this race, including AFSCME Local 88, which represents county employees, and I'm particularly proud of that, and by community leaders represents county employees, and I'm particularly proud of that, and by community leaders from all parts of District Two, including State Representative Tana Sanchez and State Representative Diego Hernandez. I have the passion, the drive, and the experience to get the job done, and I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let me thank all of the candidates for being here, for participating. I want to thank the Interfaith Alliance on Poverty for co-sponsoring tonight, Metro East Community Media for recording, and volunteers for helping. I fear that our timekeepers are going to see stop signs in their sleep tonight. Thank you for doing this. Please check our website, legawomenvoterspdx.org, to view all our forums and for TV replay information. And share that, if you can, with other people so that they all have the wisdom that we've all received tonight as well. For other primary information, pick up our Nonpartisan Voters Guide, which is really fat, so that's good, at your local public library, New Seasons Market, or Meals on Wheels Dining Center. Or if you want the electronics, go to vot411.org. Election Day is May 15th. As in all Oregon elections, you will receive a mail-in ballot. Ballots must be mailed back or delivered to the official drop-off site anywhere in Oregon, no later than 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 15th. Postmarks do not count. Thank you for being here in the audience. Thank you for watching at home. Please be informed. Remember that your vote is important, and make sure that your family and friends know that as well. Thank you.[1746.42][1746.42][applause]